The Raymore City Council meeting for April 28, 2014. Ms. Warner, would you please call roll to confirm a quorum?
Councilmember Abdalgawad?
Here.
Councilmember Boehner?
Present.
Councilmember Holman?
Present.
Councilmember Hubach?
Present.
Councilmember Kellogg absent. Councilmember Morehead?
Present.
Councilmember Stevens?
Present.
Mayor Protem Westco.
Present. We have a quorum. Will everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? And then I will come down front for presentations and awards. Now, I do have to say that it seems like every time the mayor is absent, then he always gives me this whole list of things to do and an extremely long agenda, so I apologize to everyone ahead of time. But actually, I do have the honor of presenting this proclamation, and this is for Municipal Clerks Week. And it reads, "Whereas the office of municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at all, at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now therefore I, Peter Kirkoff, Mayor of the City of Raymore, Missouri, do hereby proclaim the week of May 4th through May 10th, 2014, as Municipal Clerks Week. And further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Jeanne Warner, and deputy city clerk, Erica Hill, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Raymore to be affixed this 28th day of April, 2014." Would you like to say something?
Maybe take a quick minute to thank mayor and council for affording me the opportunity to attend my professional organizations and continue my education so that I can well serve the citizens of Raymore and the city council mayor.
And this proclamation is for Local Government Week. And it states, "Whereas local government is the backbone of our democracy and the bedrock of our political system, and a testimony to liberty, freedom, and the right to elected self-government, and whereas citizens of Missouri rely upon local governments to deliver essential community services such as clean water, police protection, and strong infrastructure, and whereas the continued success of our local governments in meetings, in meeting the needs of our citizens is a key element in maintaining the overall quality of life in Missouri, and whereas the rich tapestry of local governments in Missouri is represented by thousands of hard-working citizen officials, many of whom serve without compensation, and whereas through education and awareness, the importance of local government to, can be communicated to citizens, state legislators, and the news media, and whereas recognition of local governments' accomplishments will give Raymore residents a better understanding of how essential local services are provided. Now therefore, I Peter Kirkoff, Mayor of the City of Raymore, Missouri, do hereby proclaim the week of May 5th through May 9th, 2014, as Local Government Week. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city to be affixed this 28th day of April, 2014."
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. And it's, it always is nice for all of us to congratulate each other once a week on all of the good things that we do. So my congratulations to the mayor and the city council and the city staff for all of the different things that we do every day for our residents and corporate citizens. I just want to let you know, the Missouri Municipal League asks us to try to do what we can to recognize some of the things that we do. And so what would, one thing that we did this year, we contacted the local school district and asked if we could do something the week of May 5th to 9th, which is Local Government Week. That was not the most convenient week for them. They're doing some testing, but we are going to be there a couple of weeks later, going to take several departments to Equal Glen Intermediate, just do a little bit of a presentation on some of the things that those departments do, just to try to acquaint the school kids with some of the functions that we're involved in. So we look forward to that.
And seeing that we had no personal appearances, we'll go ahead and move on to staff reports. Mr. Berlin?
Thank you, sir. I'll call on the city clerk, Jeanne Warner.
Thank you. The Missouri Municipal League Elected Officials Training will be held in Columbia, June the 12th and the 13th. If the council members or Mayor Protem Westco are interested in attending, please let the city clerk's office know, know later than June the 6th. Also, it's been brought to my attention that there is a correction to the April 14th regular session minutes. The correction is on page two of the minutes, page 38 of the packets to the vote block. So the appropriate motion for council would be to approve under the consent agenda with the minutes as amended. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanne. I'll call on the Parks and Recreation Director, John Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Berlin. Good evening. Just a couple of things I'd like to touch on this evening. We had our Jog With Your Dog event this past Saturday at Recreation Park, and unfortunately we had a little interruption from some inclement weather. We had great attendance, other than the fact that I think a lot of people ended up staying home because of the weather. We all ran inside, dogs in tow, into the Public Works Building, and we did give away some, some door prizes, and we did finally get out and walk, but by then some of the spirit had diminished a little bit. But I think all that was there still had a pretty good time. It was a good event. We're looking forward to next year. We did have the most pre-registers that we'd ever had. We had 51 people sign up before the event even started, and that's almost twice as many as we, we usually have. So with that said, looking forward to next year already, and we're able to get it in, but you know, it's springtime, I guess, what can you say? The other thing I'd like to address just very briefly is our Arts in the Park program. We have some great entertainment lined up. We have some excellent kid games, a lot of, lot of different kid crafts that we're going to have this year, plus we already have some concessionaires signed in to, to serve their wares at the event. What we kind of need now, and I know we're still almost two months out, but we need to get the artists signed up. And I guess I'd like to use this forum and encourage any of you that you might know area artists that would be willing to show their wares and sell their wares at this event. Again, it's June 21st. It's in the farmer's market area. It's from 10:00 a.m. in the morning until 4:00 o'clock in the afternoon, and we're hoping that all of Raymore comes out to see this great event. But again, we're soliciting artists, and if you know of anyone, or if the public does, please don't be shy. We, we have a very low fee. It's only $25 this year. So come on out, but first of all, come see us so we can get you registered and get your application filled out so you can do your, your thing in the park. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. I'm calling the Public Works Director, Mike Kraff.
Thank you. In addition to my written report, I just want to let you know, we are entering construction season. The curb replacement project will be starting shortly, within the next week or two. We will be starting in the Foxhaven neighborhood, and we opened bids this week for the, our street preservation project. So with that, I am available for questions.
Thank you, Mike. And I would just note that Assistant City Manager Jim Fuerborn and I will be attending the Missouri City Management Association Conference this week down at Lake Ozark. I will be leaving Wednesday afternoon. Jim will be coming back Thursday. I'll be back Friday about midday. And also, it's well ahead of time, but just want to go ahead and encourage you to put a, a date on your calendar, and that would be a Saturday, August 16th. That's the date of our usual budget work session, and several years ago, I failed to let people know adequately ahead of time, so I try to do that now. And if you put that on your calendars, and I'll remind you again in a couple of months, but just if you could plan on that, I'd appreciate it. And that's all we have, sir. Thank you.
Are there any questions for staff? Councilmember Morehead?
Mr. Berlin, Saturday morning, I had the opportunity to go up to Price Chopper, and I saw a police car up there with flashing lights and thought I was going to see something interesting, and I did, which was officers on the inside. They were collecting pharmaceuticals, the medicine turn-in. I'm just curious how that went and how successful that was.
Chief Zimmerman, could you come forward and discuss that? Lieutenant Abdalgawad, I'm sorry.
I don't make a very good substitute for the chief. We did have the drug take-back event on Saturday morning. We recovered or collected about 225 pounds that we turned over to the DEA later that
Thank you. And just as a reminder, we also have a receptacle here all the time, down in the lobby. So if, if anybody ever wants to bring their old medications, doesn't want to wait for a special event, they can always come to our police station downstairs and drop those off in a box that we have there in the lobby. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for staff? I have one. Item I on our agenda tonight refers to governing body members on planning and zoning. Have we, have we ever had a governing body member on the Parks and Recreation Board? Is that something? I seem to recall something in the past of that being brought up once before, but I don't recall exactly.
Several years ago, and I, up until around 2009 or '10, there was a non-voting city council liaison who attended park board meetings, did not have a vote, but was a, a, an ex-officio member. And, and I believe it was in 2009, the, there was a discussion between the council and the board as to whether to continue to have that position, and the decision was made no longer to have that liaison position. And in fact, a, a council resolution was specifically adopted that did away with that liaison position. So there has not been a council member. To my knowledge, there never was a voting member, and there has not been a non-voting member on the park board for several years now.
Thank you. All right. Scroll back up. Now we will move on to committee reports. On April 22nd, we welcomed a new business into Raymore. We welcomed Aflac Insurance at 1116A Remington Plaza. It was very well attended. I had the, the opportunity to actually do the ribbon cutting and preside, and in honor of the mayor, it was bright and sunny and 70 degrees. So if you'll all make sure that Pete gets that message. That way, you know, he, he knows that I am, you know, keeping up with his standards. We do have some upcoming ribbon cuttings. On May 2nd, we have Balance Point Heating and Cooling at 109C South Madison. That will be held at 11:30. And then on May 14th, we have Home Bridge Financial Services, which is at 1116D Remington, and that will be at 11:30 also. So make sure you put those on your calendars. And I will entertain a, a motion to dispose of our consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we approve the consent agenda, including item A, City Council Regular Meeting Minutes from April 14th, 2014, as amended; item B, City Council Special Meeting Minutes from April 14th, 2014; and item C, Acceptance of the Sanitary Sewer Re-hilatation Project.
Second.
The item has been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Item passes unanimously. We'll now move on to unfinished business. Ms. Warner, may we have the, the second reading of Bill 2951 by title only, please?
The second reading of Bill 2951 by title only. Adornance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, amending the zoning map from R3A Multi-Family, Multiple Family Residential District to PUD Planned Unit Development District, land located in the northeast and northwest quarters of Section 17, Township 46 North, Range 32 West, Raymore, Cass County, Missouri.
I will entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 2951.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we approve Bill 2951, the rezoning of Foxwood Plaza, Lot 1.
Second.
The item has been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? The item passes unanimously. Now move on to item B. Ms. Warner, may we have the second reading of Bill 2945 by title only?
The second reading of Bill 2945 by title only. Adornance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, approving the final plat for Foxwood Plaza, Lot 1, a subdivision in the northeast and northwest quarters of Section 17, Township 46 North, Range 32 West, in Raymore, Cass County, Missouri.
I will entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 2945.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we approve Bill 2945, the final plat of the Foxwood Plaza, Lot 1.
Second.
The item has been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? The item passes unanimously. Let's move on to item C, the First Amendment to the Galleria TIF Agreement. Ms. Warner, may we have the second reading of Bill 2957 by title only, please?
The second reading of Bill 2957 by title only. Adornance approving the First Amendment to the amended and restated Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement between the City of Raymore, Missouri, and Raymore Galleria, LLC, for the 58 Highway West Extended Redevelopment TIF Area.
I will entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 2957.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we approve Bill 2957, the First Amendment to the Galleria TIF Agreement.
Second.
The item has been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? The item passes unanimously. Move on to item D, the Award of Contract for the Independence Day Fireworks Show. Ms. Warner, may we have the second reading of Bill 2952 by title only?
The second reading of Bill 2952 by title only. Adornance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, approving and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with J&amp;M displays in the amount of $11,000 to provide pyrotechnic services for the July 4th fireworks display.
I will entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 2952.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we approve Bill 2952, the award of the contract for the Independence Day Fireworks Show.
Second.
The item has been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Abdalgawad?
I just have a quick question. I noticed in the memo from staff, it said that the J&amp;M displays offered to throw in almost $2,000 worth of fireworks, and I was just curious, it doesn't make it or break it, but if that was every year of the three years of that contract, or only the first year?
Yes, every year of the contract, and I think that's going to be continuous all the way through all three years, but I will check on that to make absolutely sure.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? The item passes unanimously. Move on to item E, the Foxridge, Foxridge Drive, No Parking. Ms. Warner, may we have the second reading of Bill 2950 by title only?
The second reading of Bill 2950 by title only. Adornance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, amending Schedule 1 of Title III Traffic Codes by establishing a no parking zone within the city limits.
I will entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 2950.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we approve Bill 2950, Foxridge Drive, No Parking, Granada Drive to 58 Highway.
Second.
The item has been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? The item passes unanimously. Move on to item F, the Amendment to City Code, Section 210.070. Ms. Warner, may we have the second reading of Bill 2954 by title only?
The second reading of Bill 2954 by title only. Adornance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, amending Section 210.070 of the City Code Regarding Harassment of Individuals by Telephone Calls or Other Electronic Communication.
I will entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 2954.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we approve Bill 2954, Amendment to City Code, Section 210 dot 070, harassment.
Second.
The item has been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Hubach?
I wanted to know a little bit more about this, in that I've heard you all discuss previously about bullying that was going on in the schools and also on some of the neighborhoods. Will you be coming up, is this going to, to help cover that, or are you going to be coming up with another bill along with that? Because I didn't know that harassment was a problem necessarily, but I know that the bullying is. So I was just trying to figure out if this was in lieu of, or if this was going to be a part of something.
Councilmember Morehead?
Councilmember Hubach, based on our work packet, this was a proposal that stemmed from a court decision, and was proposed by the city attorney, municipal judge, and prosecuting attorney. The language change brings us more consistent with applicable law. Now, there is a discussion about adding, or doing some additional work with this section later this year. It was not prepared yet, and we want this to stand first. So the issue will be addressed later, at least I will be proposing something later. But this is kind of the first step, and, and this is appropriate to bring as far as the definition change.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? The item passes unanimously. Move on to item G, the Amendment to City Code, Sections 385 dot 140A. Ms. Warner, may we have the second reading of Bill 2955 by title only?
The second reading of Bill 2955 by title only. Adornance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, amending Section 385 point 140A of the City Code regarding evidence of financial responsibility required by an owner and operator of a motor vehicle when stopped in the City of Raymore.
I will entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 2955.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we approve Bill 2955, Amendment to the City Code, Section 385 point 140A, Financial Responsibility, Operation of a Motor Vehicle.
Second.
The item has been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? The item passes unanimously. That concludes old business. Now we will move on to new business. And I will actually entertain a motion to recess our regular meeting, only to conduct our annual meeting of the Raymore Municipal Corporation, or Ray, RayMac, and then return back to open session.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we recess our current meeting and return back after the RayMac meeting.
Second.
Item has been motioned and seconded. All those in favor? We stand recessed. I now call to order the annual meeting of the Board of Directors of the Raymore Municipal Assistance Corporation. Ms. Warner, will you call roll to confirm a quorum?
Director Abdalgawad?
Here.
Director Boehner?
Here.
Director Holman?
Present.
Director Hubach?
Present.
Director Kellogg absent. Director Morehead?
Present.
Director Stevens?
Present.
Director Westco?
Present.
Mayor, or Director Kirkoff absent.
We have a quorum. I will entertain a motion to dispose of the minutes from our April 22nd, 2013 meeting.
I move that we approve the minutes from our April, sorry, I lost that date.
22nd.
22nd, 2013 meeting.
Second.
The item has been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? And abstention. So that is six in favor and one abstention. Yes, sir. Oh, please state your reason for abstaining. Thank you.
I wasn't on the council at that time, so I have no idea if the minutes are accurate. I assume that your judgment's correct, but I can't state that they were.
Thank you for that explanation, sir. All right, we will now move on to our first order of business, which is election of officers. I will entertain a motion. Councilmember Morehead?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I would move to nominate the following officers. President Mayor Kirkoff, Peter Kirkoff, Vice President Brian Westco, Secretary Sonya Abdalgawad, Treasurer Cindy Watson.
I'll second.
The item has been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? The item is unanimous. We'll now move on to other matters. Is there, is there anything else before this board that we need to have a discussion? Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting of RayMac.
I move that we adjourn the RayMac meeting.
Second.
The item has been motioned and seconded. All those in favor of adjourning the annual meeting of RayMac and moving back into open session? That vote is unanimous. We will now move on to item B of our regular meeting, the Raymore Festival in the Park Memorandum of Understanding. Ms. Warner, may we have the first reading of Resolution 14 dash 21 by title only, please?
The reading of Resolution 14 dash 21 by title only. A resolution of the City of Raymore, Missouri, approving the memorandum of understanding between the City of Raymore and the Festival in the Park, Inc. Committee for the 2014 Festival in the Park Event.
Mr. Berlin, may we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, sir. I'll call on the Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Berlin. This is the annual request from the Raymore Festival in the Park Committee. The event this year is scheduled for September 19th to 21st. As the memo states, there are no significant changes at this time in the MOU. I would entertain any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions for staff? Thank you. I will entertain a motion to dispose of Resolution 14 dash 21.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we approve Resolution 1421, Raymore Festival in the Park Memorandum of Understanding.
Second.
The item has been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? The item passes unanimously. Now move on to item C, the Application for Alcohol in the Parks Permit. Ms. Warner, may we have the first reading of Resolution 1422 by title only?
The reading of Resolution 14 dash 22 by title only. A resolution of the City of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the Festival in the Park Committee to serve alcohol in a designated area in Memorial Park during the 2014 festival event.
Mr. Berlin, may we have a staff report?
Thank you, sir. I'll call Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you. Again, this is the request that they annually placed to serve alcohol in the park for the Festival in the Park event. If you remember last year, the only difference was is they allowed alcohol to be served throughout the park area. There were no incidents or reports of problems on this new policy. Other than that, the policy remains the same. They did, the Festival Committee did meet all the conditions and requirements set forth by the park board and was approved by the park board in the regular meeting.
Are there any questions for staff? Thank you, sir. I will entertain a motion to dispose of Resolution 1422.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we approve Resolution 1422, Application for Alcohol in the Parks Permit, Raymore Festival in the Park.
Second.
The item has been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Six in favor, one opposed, the motion carries. Now move on to item D, the Budget Amendment. Ms. Warner, may we have the first reading of Bill 2956 by title only, please?
The first reading of Bill 2956 by title only. Adornance creating the City Sales Tax Reserve Fund for the Tax Increment Refunding and Improvement Revenue Bonds, Raymore Galleria Project Series 2014A, amending the annual budget of the city for the fiscal year beginning November 1, 2013, to provide for an initial deposit into such fund, and providing for the administration of such fund.
May we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, sir. I'm going to call on David Buschek from our Special Economic Development Council, Gilmore &amp; Bell.
Thank you, and good evening. My name is David Buschek, the law firm of Gilmore &amp; Bell. We are bond counsel and special economic development counsel to the city. Quick summary of this ordinance. This ordinance will create a city sales tax reserve fund, and it will deposit 100,000 from the city's general fund, available balance into this new fund that's created. Brief background summary of the purpose of the ordinance. If you remember at the last meeting, when we discussed the ordinance that was approved on the agenda earlier tonight, I described the waterfall analogy that we use in connection with the financing. The TIF revenues are the water that falls into a series of buckets, and I described the series of buckets that's created by the financing that has occurred. the series of buckets that's created by the financing that has occurred. The previous ordinance that was on the agenda and approved by the council adjusted, as I mentioned at the last meeting, one of the buckets that's far down in that waterfall. The primary bucket in the waterfall that's created by the financing is the bucket that collects the funds for the debt service payments. So the bonds that have been issued, those require annual debt service payments by the city, and so the debt service bucket is essentially the fourth bucket in the series of buckets, and that's the, that's the primary focus of the financing, that's the primary use of the TIF revenues. When the city approved the TIF contract for the Galleria project back in 2012, the TIF Plan Amendment and the TIF Contract, that contract indicated that the city would provide any additional coverage that's necessary to get to the point where the city could issue the bonds. And what coverage means is for every $1 debt service payments that the city needs to make on an annual basis, there actually needs to be additional revenues that are projected to be collected to support those debt service payments. So in this case, the financing was at 135% of the debt service coverage, meaning for every $1 that the city is scheduled to pay every year to service that debt, the city needed to demonstrate that the revenues would be $1.35 projected to be collected by the city. So when the city engaged a consultant to conduct the revenue study in support of the bonds that have already been issued by the city, that revenue study indicated that we could reach about 129% coverage, so there was about a 6% shortfall. And in that TIF contract that the city approved back in 2012, the city indicated that from a very limited source of funds, the city would make up whatever that gap is. So what that means in practical terms in the waterfall analogy that I've used is if the TIF revenues at any point are ever insufficient to fill up that bucket to make those debt service payments, there are other funds that would be drawn upon to, to complete those payments, and the city's extra sales tax pledge that would be accomplished by this ordinance is one of those three additional sources. The additional sources that would be used to make those debt service payments in the event that there's a revenue shortfall is first, a debt service reserve fund that's already been created for the financing, that's already been funded up in the amount of about 1.6 million. The second source of revenue would be a business interruption account that will be funded up in the amount of about 400,000. And then as a third source of additional revenue are the funds that are created by, the funds that are deposited under this ordinance tonight. So in the event that there are revenue shortfalls in the waterfall that I've described, the first source would be the debt service reserve fund, then the business interruption fund, and if those are completely exhausted, then finally this additional source of funds that's created by this ordinance tonight. So a few key questions then, that, that may come up under this arrangement. Under what conditions might these funds be used? And I've conducted an additional calculation, not something that was calculated when the financing occurred, but more recently when we were analyzing this ordinance and the requirements. And if the revenues that are projected to be produced by the Sam's Club and the other stores in the TIF area, even if those revenues are 30% under projections, there still should be enough revenues from those two other additional sources that I mentioned to make the debt service payments, and the city shouldn't have to tap into these additional funds that are created by this ordinance. So, that's, that's a drastic shortfall. There could be a very significant shortfall in the projected revenues, and these funds, hopefully, still would not need to be called upon. If there is a revenue shortfall, the first thing that would still fund the debt service payments are the TIF revenues, as I described, and then these three additional sources of revenue with the cities, the funds that are created by, that are parked by the city sales tax reserve fund, and this ordinance would be finally drawn upon. And last question, at the end, if these funds are not needed, what eventually happens to those? If the, if the funds that are created, that are, that are parked in this fund aren't ultimately needed, then they'll come back to the city's general fund. And the hope is if the project produces revenue as projected, this will be a one-time deposit in this fund, it will sit there for the life of the bonds, then it will come back to the city.
Are there any questions for special counsel or staff? Councilmember Stevens.
Do you think the arrival of Menards is going to affect the city?
Well, I know in the revenue study, the consultant took into account the other stores that are open in the area, the other stores that were projected to be open. I'm not sure if there was a Menards store that was specifically called out in the revenue study, but I know that it did take into account the other competitors and how other development could occur in the area. Yeah, and we don't think that Menards was specifically called out in the revenue study.
Any other, any other questions? I have one. Are the businesses that are currently in the Galleria, are their revenue streams performing as we expected and as projected?
Of course, we can't get any specifics, but right now, the area as a whole is conservatively spot on exactly what we were projecting, perhaps slightly ahead.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I will entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 2956.
Excuse me. Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we approve Bill 2956, budget amendment to establish, establishment of city sales tax reserve fund.
Second.
The item has been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? The item passes unanimously. We'll now move on to item E, the budget amendment for the park fund. Ms. Warner, may we have the first reading of Bill 2961 by title only, please?
The first reading of Bill 2961 by title only, in ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, amending the fiscal year 2014 park fund budget.
Thank you. May we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, sir. In the budget, budget message that, that I provided, that transmitted the proposed fiscal year 2014 budget to you in last August, I recommended transferring $100,000 from the general fund to the park fund for general support, and that was twice what we have been transferring for several years. This recommendation was accepted by the city council, was included in the fiscal year 2014 general fund budget. The park board wanted to wait until the city council had approved that recommendation before they allocated that additional $50,000 in revenue. So it's showing as a revenue into the park fund, but it is not showing as an expenditure. They wanted to see if the council approved that, and then if so, then determine in what way that they would recommend spending those additional dollars. At their meeting on April 22nd, the park board voted to recommend amendment of their budget by spending amounts that are noted in the memorandum that's included in your packet and attached as Exhibit A, and so Bill 2961 does make that, that budget amendment accordingly.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Councilmember Stevens.
All these things they want to spend this money on, is it something that's normal by the time that we're doing budgets? And if so, is there any reason why we can't do it during budget talks?
I do think these are, I'll call on Mr. Kennedy. I do think these are all things that they were hoping to do this year, and that is, that is why they've asked for that, for those allocations. John?
Thank you, sir. All of these items have been identified as specific needs for both recreation program and park maintenance activity. There's a wide variety, as you notice, everything from 5,000 of additional dollars for fireworks to a park maintenance trailer, to supervision over our athletic programs. These are all things that staff identified that they would like to, to see included in the budget for 2014, but budget resources just were not there to allow that until the additional $50,000 was granted by the council that, that allowed us to do these things. So I could sure address each one of them, or answer any questions that you have concerning each one of them, but they were pretty much identified for 2014's allocation and use in this year.
Councilmember Morehead.
Mr. Kennedy, on the bottom of the first page, it has site supervisor for athletics. Is this designed to be just a one-year assignment? This is not intended to create a, a long-term appointment of a position, is that correct?
Sir, is it, it is a part-time seasonal position. We generally use this during the soccer and baseball and softball seasons that we have at a recreation park. This is an onsite individual that works with the officials, the people in the concession stands, coaches, officials that are on the fields themselves, anything and everything that we have to do with those sporting events that are located out at recreation park. To answer your question, we hope to integrate this into our budget so it is an annual thing. We really feel that we need someone specifically acquainted with our programs and activities that if there is concerns, they can make contact immediately to other staff, call police, call medical assistance, anything and everything that is associated with concerns that, with the programs or the facilities themselves.
Any further questions? Thank you, sir. I do, don't have a question, but more of a, a request. If this is going to be put into our budget going forward, I would like to see it presented the same way that you presented it this year, having it broke out so that we can actually see the, the difference in, in what that money goes for and how it's applied. So we would see it the same way that we saw it during this budget work session.
Noted, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I will entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 2961.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we approve Bill 2961, budget amendment, park fund.
Second.
The item has been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? The item passes unanimously. We'll now move to item F, the award of contract. Ms. Warner, may we have the first reading of Bill 2953 by title only, please?
The first reading of Bill 2953 by title only, in ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, approving and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with ViRIO Planning and Design to provide consultant services for the citywide trail master plan, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
May we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, sir. I'll call on Mr. Kennedy.
It seemed to be wearing out the carpet tonight. This was a capital project that was identified by the park board in 2013. What the three ideas are behind this is to look at our existing trail system, to make sure that adequately serves the areas in the community. Second of all, with the addition of more building and more, or more areas in our community opening, we hope to try to plan ahead of time so these trails could be integrated into these new areas. And third thing is connectivity. We would like to see some of the communities, communities around Raymore have the opportunity to connect to our trail system and have our trail system connect to them. It was $8,000 budgeted for this. ViRIO did request $8,000. The selection was made strictly on the fact that they had done a lot of these in communities that are adjacent to ours, and second of all, they are currently doing a bicycle plan for Cass County, and a lot of the work that they are put into that already could be integrated into the work that they do for us for the Trails Master Plan. Any questions you might have?
Are there questions for staff? Councilmember Holman.
Mr. Kennedy, just to check for personal understanding, the bottom line, I guess, hard document we would receive from this would be probably a map. I mean, that would kind of boil it down to the nickel, if I'm correct, something of probably the city and the surrounding community showing our existing trails and potential trails for the future and how they would connect with, with other cities and maybe some type of timeline. Is that a correct assumption on my part?
Yes, sir. That's exactly what we are expecting.
Thank you.
Is there a component of this, of the Trails Master Plan that might show connecting Raymore Peculiar Down School Road with the bike trail in the future?
I think that could be definitely a consideration. I know School Road is being scheduled, and there has been discussion about making a trail along that. I do not know if that's, if, if the land that has been purchased through easement is appropriate or large enough for that, but I would hope that that would be a consideration with the amount of traffic that we see on that road, not only for automobiles, but for also bicycles.
Are there any other questions? Councilmember Huback?
I had a question for clarification, if I could, on, on the staff. Is this money coming out of the park fund?
Yes, ma'am.
And it's being approved by the park board? Well, that's what I, you have your own separate boards, you have your own separate levy, so that's why I was wondering why the change orders within established constraints were being, to be done by the city manager instead of the park board? Because if, if anything happens to change the funds, it should be, you all are providing the money, you should be the ones that would be authorizing the, you know, the change within the budget constraints, it would seem to me, rather than, Mr. Berlin represents the council, but we don't represent necessarily the park board when it goes on how you spend your money. So I wanted some clarification on that.
Hi, if the council, if the council would like to make a change, they can. It's standard language in our ordinances, it's just, I perform that administrative role if for some reason there's a change order that's required. In this professional services contract, I can't imagine there would be a change order, but that's the answer to your question. It's just standard language for every ordinance that awards a contract. If you'd like to change it, you certainly can.
Are there any other questions? Thank you. I will entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 2953.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we approve Bill 2953, award of contract for the Trails Master Plan.
Second.
The item has been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? The item passes unanimously. We'll now move on to item G, the award of contract for 58 Highway Culvert Rehabilitation. Ms. Warner, may we have the first reading of Bill 2960 by title only, please?
The first reading of Bill 2960 by title only, in ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Utility Solutions LLC for the 58 Highway Culvert Rehabilitation Project, city project number 14 dash 195 dash 201, in the amount of $13,685, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Thank you. May we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, sir. I'll call on Mr. Craft.
Thank you, Mr. Berlin. Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council, this contract involves the rehabilitation of a stormwater culvert under 58 Highway that's located approximately one-half mile east of J Highway. The culvert's deteriorated and causing, causing settlements. If, if anyone's driven that road, you know where, where the patch is and where the, where the un-smooth part of the road is. This project involves repairing the, the culvert in place so we don't have to disrupt traffic. We recommend award to the low bidder, Utility Solutions.
Are there any questions for staff? Thank you, sir. I will entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 2960.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we approve Bill 2960, award of contract for 58 Highway Culvert Rehabilitation.
Do we have a second?
Second.
The item has been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? The item passes unanimously. Now move on to item H, amendment to Chapter 500 Building Codes. Ms. Warner, may we have the first reading of Bill 2959 by title only, please?
The first reading of Bill 2959 by title only, in ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, amending section 702.2, sanitation facilities of the ICC/NSSA standard for the design and construction of storm shelters, ICC 500 dash 2008, adopted as part of Chapter 500 Building Regulations of the Raymore City Code.
May we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, sir. I'll call on the building official, John Warner.
Thank you, Mr. Berlin. Mayor Protem, city council. Just a short summary of the bill. April 2013, city council adopted the international series of codes, and this included the adoption of the ICC/NSSA, which is a national standard designed for storm shelters. The standards contained in the Storm Shelter Code kind of are nationally recognized standards that's published by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA. And recently, there have been some inquiries regarding tornado storm shelters in Raymore, namely the daycare centers. Couple of them want to provide this amenity to their children and their staff, and there are some non-life-threatening provisions of the Storm Shelter Code that add additional costs, such as added sanitary facilities, and a storm shelter that might be just exclusively used for that purpose and no other purpose. There are businesses that may receive grants or state mandates that require storm shelter space to be, to be storm shelter space to be, to be just exclusive and no other use is permitted in that same space in order to receive the grant or say, uh, tax credit. And so city staff is proposing to reduce the number of required toilet facilities, uh, to just one for community storm shelters greater than 50, the occupant load of 50, and you, and used exclusively for the storm shelters. This may encourage the other businesses in Raymore to build storm shelters for their patrons and, and maybe an added amenity especially for institutional uses, uh, educational or daycare centers. And that's, uh, my staff report. Thank you.
Are there any questions for staff? Uh, councilmember Stevens?
And this code refers to residential. If you had a storm shelter in a house, would that also apply?
No, sir. It doesn't apply to any residential. It's just, uh, strictly to community. Um, and in this case, it would be, I'm using that daycare center as a, as an example.
Councilmember Boehner?
These storm shelters are, are, we're, we're strictly talking about storm shelters that are there just for the period of the storm, not for an emergency shelter for a long-term sheltering period, correct?
That's correct. It's just exclusively for the, for the storm event.
Are there any other questions for staff? Thank you, sir. I will entertain a motion to dispose of bill 2959.
Mr. Mayor Protam, I move that we approve bill 2959, amendment to chapter 500 Building Code, Storm Shelters.
Second.
The item has been motioned and seconded. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor? The item passes unanimously. And now move on to item I, governing body members on planning and zoning commission. Ms. Warner, may we have the first reading of bill 2959 by title only, please?
Sir, I don't think there's a bill associated with this.
Oh, I am sorry. Uh, may we have a staff report, please?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Mayor Protam, section 465.020B4 of the city code provides, during a meeting in April of each year, the council should designate whether or not it shall have a member serve on the planning and zoning commission, and the mayor shall designate if he or she chooses to be a member of the commission, and any such member shall serve for a term of one year. Now Mayor Kirkoof, of course, is absent, but you should have in front of you his written statement stating that he will serve on the commission, uh, again this year, and the council at this time is requested to indicate whether or not it shall have a member serve on the planning and zoning commission for 2014, 2015.
Thank you. Uh, so I guess now I will open it up to the council. Uh, does anybody want to serve as the, uh, council, uh, member on the, the planning and zoning? Councilmember Hubak?
Yes, okay, if you could make a negative, uh, motion, I will do that because we have decided many years ago that we did not want to have a representative on the planning and zoning because we said that would give the one council member two votes, and we didn't think that was proper as long as the mayor is representing the, the city. So we have always voted no on that, and as you know, we've got Mr. Holman here, Mr. Morehead, Mr. Kellogg, and myself have all served on the planning and zoning commission, so I think we understand a little bit about what they go through. So I would recommend that we not put anyone on the planning and zoning commission from the ci-, the, um, I guess I could move that, that we not have any representative from the council on the planning and zoning commission.
Is there any other discussion? Um, then I will entertain a motion to approve, uh, Mayor Kirkoof's appointment to the planning and zoning commission and to, uh, decline a council representative.
Mr. Mayor Protam, I move that, um, only the mayor, Pete Kirkoof, represent us on the planning and zoning commission.
I'll second that.
The item has been motioned and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. That concludes new business. We will now move on to public comments. If you would like to, uh, come to the mic and identify yourself for the record and keep your comments to a maximum of five minutes. Seeing none, we will move on to mayor council communications and, well, I, I didn't bring a quarter, so, uh, we will actually start, uh, on my right with councilmember Abdelgawad.
Thank you. I was waiting for the spreadsheet to come out. Um, I want to start just saying that I'm happy, um, to recognize Jeannie and Erica this week for Municipal Clerks Week. We're, we're very proud of you and appreciate your hard work. Um, I would also like to thank city staff and my fellow councilmembers and the mayor, um, for their service in honor of Local Government Week. My family and I went out to jog with your dog on Saturday, and because of the pouring down rain, we didn't stick around for very long. We kind of chickened out when everybody headed into the buil-, into the building with our, um, two-year-old, very large, German Shepherd puppy, so, um, but there seemed like lots of people there, and I'm happy to see that that's turning out more and more people every year. Um, I'm looking, quick question for staff. You mentioned that in honor of Local Government Week, you're going to Eagle Glen. I realize that Rital Ridge is outside of the city, but it would sure be nice for those kids to get a chance to speak with city staff or, um, have an opportunity to learn the things you're going to teach them.
Sure, yes, ma'am. Um, I contacted, uh, the school superintendent. Uh, he indicated I would probably hear from both principals, but I only heard from the one. So that is the reason why we're only at that one school.
Disappointed to hear that. Thanks for the explanation. Um, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councilmember Hubak?
I have nothing tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevens?
No comments tonight.
Councilmember Holman?
Well, again, and I've said this for a number of years since, uh, my tenure on the, uh, planning and, and zoning commission, uh, my thanks to staff, both our full-time and our contract council. Uh, it's just great. It makes the job here so much easier, and you guys do a great job, and that's evident year after year. Thank you. I also want to thank, um, it's a little unusual since my second council meeting. I'm not used to seeing a large audience. There were many times in planning and zoning, there were no one in those chairs, and if you'll notice, I think about three-quarters of our audience is young people tonight, which is really interesting, which either means that you got forced to be here for a class assignment, or one of you all is going to be setting up here one day soon. But we're glad to have you, very glad to have you. Thank you for being here.
Councilmember Boehner?
Uh, I just want to, uh, give a big thank you to the Parks Department, uh, for setting up the Arts in the Park. I'm very excited about that, and again, would encourage all the artists to, uh, begin, uh, finding their slot. Uh, $25 is a very small price to pay, uh, for the exposure that one can get in this type of environment.
Councilmember Morehead?
Um, I would point out, thank you to the students who are here tonight. I noticed that when students are here, the meetings get done quicker and they run longer when you leave, so please come back. No kidding. Uh, but thank you for being here. Um, I, again, have to congratulate, uh, Jeannie and Erica. I think you guys deserve more than a week, uh, with all the hard work you do for us, and, uh, um, it's deserved. Uh, for Local Government Week, I'm kind of disappointed you guys got shorted by two days. I noticed it's only fi-, and, and, and I say that with, with some degree of seriousness. Um, uh, I don't think we always take into consideration that when many of us go to bed at night, there are still, uh, the city is still working and is still doing things for us, and there's a lot of staff members out there that are working for us ever-present, so, um, it's also deserving of more than a week. Um, I was with councilmember Abdelgawad for Jog With Your Dog. Um, my, I will actually say, I finally went inside when the lightning struck in, uh, Dutchman Acres, and I was standing next to a metal pole, um, and I felt it need to go inside, but I will say the dogs actually cared less about the weather. They enjoyed the rain. It was the humans, the, the quadrupeds had more of a problem. So, um, I, I'm glad to ask the question about the pharmaceuticals turning in. It was, I mean, that's amazing to have over 200 pounds. Um, it's nice to, it, it's nice that, uh, the community gets to interact with law enforcement in positive ways like that. Um, I, myself, uh, go, going back to the local government, want to say I think it's fantastic that we're going out to the schools, uh, um, and, and hopefully we can keep doing that, uh, that's a real benefit to the community. Mr. Kapke, I'm sorry I didn't, we didn't save up a good legal issue for you to share. Uh, we're saving it for Mr. Willarth, um, or if you, if you'd welcome and let Mr. Zurk come, I could be, bring up, uh, urban chicken issue for his, on his behalf, so, thank you very much. Thank you.
Well, I, I, I will finish up, things up here, and I will actually take responsibility for the rain this Saturday at Jog With Your Dog, because if the mayor would have been here, it would have been 70 and sunny, as he always says. And even though my dog was in attendance, I was not, so I will take responsibility for that. Um, but I do want to congratulate the Parks Department on the increased numbers, uh, of participants. That's, that is very good. And I also want to take the opportunity to let everybody know that if you use our park system or our trails, please clean up after your pets. There are, um, uh, doggy sanitation receptacles and, uh, sacks provided along the trails, so please, um, be kind to, to everyone who uses, um, our amenities and, and clean up after your pet. Um, I also want to congratulate and to thank, um, our, our clerks department, and instead of a week, I think we actually should make it a month and, and actually honor them for a month because they really do, uh, great work. And I, I also want to, um, to recognize, uh, Mr. Crass and, um, Ms. Hill. I had the opportunity to, uh, attend the Excellence in Education banquet last night at the school, and their children were there, uh, receiving an award, and so I, I have to say that, you know, the, the kids are a chip off the old, old block, so, um, it was great seeing them and, and seeing, you know, uh, students being recognized. Um, two things that I'd like to see, uh, a request coming up on, uh, future work sessions. Um, one, I would like to have a discussion regarding a non-voting council liaison to the park board. I think with some of the projects and the scope and size of them that are getting ready to take place, I think that would be a very beneficial position to make sure that, uh, communication flow is, uh, i- is timely and, you know, that way we don't see any barriers or barricades to making those projects move forward in a, you know, in a seamless, uh, progression. And then I'd also like to have a, a conversation regarding a, a council retreat. Uh, councilmember Hubak had made that request, and I'd like to, uh, get that on a work session so we can have that discussion and to set a time. And with that, uh, I will entertain a motion, uh, we need to go into executive session this evening, so I will entertain a motion to move it to executive session to discuss litigation matters as authorized by RSMO 610.021 subsection 1.
Mr. Mayor Protam, I move that we go into executive session, um, as authorized by RSMO 610 dot 021.
Second.
The item has been, uh, motioned and seconded. Uh, Ms. Warner, would you, uh, conduct a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Abdelgawad?
Yes.
Councilmember Boehner?
Yes.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hubak?
Yes.
Councilmember Kellogg absent. Councilmember Morehead?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Council, or Mayor Protam, let's go.
Uh, yes, uh, we are adjourned to executive session. We will return to open session only to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.